Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, July 7, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Macon Aiken. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 500, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into temporary construction easements in lieu of eminent domain with the owners of certain properties in the 24th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh adjacent to Cowley Park for landslide remediation work related to public park purposes. Bill Number 501, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a temporary construction easement in lieu of eminent domain with the owners of certain property in the 19th Ward known as 1599 Fallowfield Avenue and 1545 Fallowfield Avenue for landslide remediation work related to public roadway purposes. Bill Number 502, Resolution Granting unto Mark Dina Tally, 242 Bingham Street, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install new retaining wall and fence at Sycamore Street and Red Oak Way in the 19th Ward, 2nd Council District. Bill Number 503, Resolution Granting unto Crafton Borough, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense in 18-foot stormwater sewer line and end wall with stormwater outfall into Shortiers Creek at the intersection of Sharp in the 28th Ward, 2nd Council District. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 504, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh of a declaration disaster emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020 to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for 49 additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until August 25, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 506, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into professional services agreement with VJ Kapoor, the Kapoor Company, 8 Bradock Way, Asheville, North Carolina, for professional services in connection with FOP interest arbitration in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Bill Number 507, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Howard J. Woods and Associates LLC for professional services in connection with PUC litigation and related matters, amount not to exceed $50,000. Bill Number 508, Resolution Amending Resolution 829, authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant PC for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total cost to $30,000 to $35,305,000 $340,000, excuse me. Bill Number 509, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Curtain &amp; Hefner LLP in an Amount Not to Exceed $11,864.05 for professional legal services and expert advice regarding source of income litigation. Bill Number 510, Resolution Amending Resolution 587, authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into professional services agreement with Fox Rothschild LLP for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claims Act litigation by increasing the total cost $45,000 from $235,000 to $280,000. Bill Number 511, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with the Cohen Law Group to address a matter of pending telecommunications and cable regulatory litigation in an amount not to exceed $29,000. Bill Number 512, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into professional services agreement with Jones-Pasadaius PLLC for professional legal services for an employment-related matter before the Human Relations Commission, cost not to exceed $24,000. Bill Number 513, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into professional services agreement with Coen-O'Connor for professional legal services in connection with an employment-related matter, cost not to exceed $15,000. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 514, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an access agreement or agreements with the Carnegie Science Center of Pittsburgh for purposes of a drive-in movie presentation. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 505, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into an agreement with SciCom Data Systems, Inc. for professional services relating to continuing maintenance, support, and upgrades to city law, the Department of Law's Legal Case Management and Administrative Support System, cost not to exceed $11,376. Bill Number 515, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a three-year contract or agreement with Esri, granting uncapped citywide access to Esri's products for all departments to build and maintain a city authoritative system of record, make data-driven decisions, share information across departments, perform advanced analytics, and share information with the public to meet the needs of the City of Pittsburgh, sum not to exceed $600,000. And Bill Number 516, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into startup participation agreements with selected entities as part of the Sixth Cohort of Pittsburgh Lab and further authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services as part through Pittsburgh Lab. That concludes the reading of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, July 7, 2020. Meeting announcements, council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Grines. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
There.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
This is Cal Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join together from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Our next order of business is proclamations and we have one, I think, will of council. Is that correct? For evictions and foreclosure moratorium?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank, I believe, Councilman Strasburger, also co-sponsor to my staff. This is just for extensions on evictions and other issues that we're dealing with. If the Clerk's office could just read the paragraph, last paragraph, I'm good to go.
Okay. Bill Number 517, we had further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh supports the efforts of Pennsylvania State Senators Jay Costa, Vincent Hughes, Andrew Deniman, Anthony Williams, Wayne Fontana, Pam Iavino, Lawrence Fornese, John Blake, Katie Muth, Judith Schrank, Lisa Boscola, Steve Santarciaro, Aria Collette, Christine Tardaglione, Lindsay Williams, Art Haywood, James Brewster, Tim Kearney, John Sabbath, and Sharif Shih, to see the statewide eviction and foreclosure moratorium extended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman O'Connor? Or Councilman Strasburger?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, for taking the lead on this and allowing me to co-sponsor with you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other members? I just want to thank you both for this. Thank you for your work on this. Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Approved. Thank you. Now, when we move on to our next order of business is public comment, I would like to remind everyone of the rules of council that comments should be directed towards matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. We may, maybe have the first speaker, please, and please state your name and your neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. And when the yellow, oh, there's no yelling. You have three minutes to speak. And Madam Clerk, will you please call the first speaker?
Yes, I have Gary Kelmeyer.
Thank you, Madam. Gary? I don't see Gary on here. I see Bridget Kelmeyer.
She's next.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Bridget Kelmeyer.
Hello, this is Bridget Kelmeyer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Please state your neighborhood and then you have three minutes.
I'm speaking on behalf of, I cannot start the video, sorry. Won't work. I'm speaking on behalf against the historic designation of 186 Home Street on behalf of owner Eric Rupert. There we go. You might be able to see me now.
Yep. Please continue.
This, this property is supposed to be Greek Revival architecture, which looks like this. Unfortunately, it does not. It does not physically fill the qualifications and those details are in your materials. Section 1101.4, as I'm an attorney, I must go by the laws, so must you. Criteria 3 says it must be distinguished, distinguished by rarity, uniqueness, or overall quality of design, detail, materials, or craftsmanship to make it worthy of preservation. And it must have historic integrity. There are three kinds of integrity. This basic means are the original materials still there, and they are not. The list applied by the Lawrenceville Historic Society has six paragraphs, some of which are in your council report, and they all talk about, each paragraph says later alteration, removed or replaced, appears to have been there, talks about a ghost phrase. This is a ghost of a Greek revival house. The bulletin, which guides the criteria in historic societies, says, that National Bulletin, says if a property retains some basic features but has lost the majority of them that once characterized their style, it is not eligible to be placed in a historic registry. Neither is a property eligible. Its features have been concealed under modern features. And as to location, it is no longer a farm. It has lost its rural setting. Now, Criteria 2, association with a specific person. It was built in 1841 and, I'm sorry, it was built in 1840, according to the National Register, and Ewalt, Samuel Ewalt, the person involved, died a year later, his granddaughter. In, in a book from, called Precious Court Records by Margaret Pearson Bothwell, she says, "Ewalt pursued multiple occupations as a soldier, innkeeper, merchant, politician. It is most likely the last occupation that brought him more recognition than his fellow settlers, not his own acts, as there is no record of a significant required, significant historical contribution being made by him." And to correct an error, he was not the first sheriff of Allegheny County, James Morrison Must. The, finally, the 1810 census records that Ewalt was the only person to manage to keep registered two slaves in Pennsylvania, an anti-slave state, for 30 years.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk?
I don't see him.
Okay, next speaker, please. If he comes on, we'll grab him. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Gary Kelmeyer. I should be back on.
Okay, go ahead, please. Mr. Kelmeyer, we'll get you at the end of the, end of the meeting. Madam Clerk, did you have Monique Pierre? Did you have?
Yes, Monique Pierre. I don't see Monique on. So we'll do Beth Rupert.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Chloe Beth Rupert, owner of 186. Again, I am pleading with you to vote and note the nomination of my house at 186 Home Street. As I testified last week, this house should not be nominated since it's based on the history of Samuel Ewalt, who was a racist slave owner who continued to not only own slaves, but continued to increase the number of slaves even after the abolition of slavery. He was also a prop clerk, who is a sheriff. Instead of upholding the law to set his slaves free, he continued to not only own slaves, he was also found in court for having a brothel and abusing women. These are facts, and I testify to these facts numerous times throughout this process, yet I find it concerning that it did not make it into any of the amendments that you have received. This is another example of systemic racism and the facts that they're being buried. He's not a man of integrity or one that is deserving of plaque in his honor. The city is working so hard to enact laws protecting rights of all citizens, especially in the black community, yet why would you glorify and immortalize a slave owner? As a member of Black Lives Matter, as well as a civil human being, this nomination goes against everything you've pulled the community that you're vowing to change. You should also vote no as this house is falling over and is a danger to the community and does not satisfy the law. For section 1101.04, criteria for designation, ordinance item C, integrity of historic structures, this house does not have sufficient integrity of location, design, materials, or workmanship to make it worthy of preservation. I have submitted this evidence through my structural engineering report as was the city's response by David Green and the PLI. Looking at our structural report pictures, any layperson can see that the roof structure, the brick walls, the foundation, and the floors do not have sufficient integrity as they are crumbling, falling down, far out of plumb and bowing. Our engineers stated the roof system is in a state of structural failure. Upper section of the west wall is structurally unstable at the present time and appears to be in imminent danger of sudden collapse without warning. Your own PLI, David Green, agrees today. He states that location of the area most adjacent and the mortar deterioration is above the backyard of the. Please see photos at end of this letter which appears to have a step back of approximately 10 feet such that the potential for direct harm is relatively minimal. And also, while a collapse of the roof is possible, it is not imminent or immediate in either. The fact that this building possibly can collapse confirms that this house does not have sufficient integrity of design, materials, and workmanship. The city inspector has never been in this house nor the stakeholders in years have the evidence to give you right now of all this. Who is paying to fix up this house? As of today, there are no offers from anyone to purchase to fix this house up. If they say there are, prove it. Ask them for the names and numbers. We cannot afford to fix this house up or to keep this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Eric Rupert.
I'm sorry, but Eric could not make it. He had to go to work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Carmen Brown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because I have some other headphones on. Okay, my name is Carmen Brown. I'm from the 9th Council District. And I wanted to speak a little bit about, there is a bill coming up, a resolution coming up. Let me see, Bill 0040. And this is the Stop the Violence Fund. My question is, even though this is going to be probably discussed on another day, but I happen to come across it online. But I would like to know, first and foremost, this, this particular fund, this particular program has not been operational, first and foremost. And as, as, as people know, I live in the Lincoln, Lexington area. So we've had a lot of, you know, violence, shootings. So I noticed that this program at the time was not operational. So why all of a sudden, you know, that, that, that Councilman Burgess decides that he wants to put money into this particular fund? So again, I want to just let people know, when you talk about the funding of police, you better know exactly how this money is going to be distributed. You better know what your council person is going to be doing with this money. Because it seems to me every time there's a tragedy or trauma in our community, our councilman always finds ways to try to, you know, get funding or try to find some way to fleece money. Okay, because it's always about money in our, with our councilmen. So people just better be very, very careful and ask the hard questions about exactly where this money has gone. Because again, this fund hasn't even been operational. This particular program has not been operational. So again, I would, I would add, tell people that you have to be very careful, again, about, you know, asking the hard questions about where is this, where is this money going? And, and make sure that he's specific about how this money is going to be spent. And this is, and I also looked at this Black Lives Matter. That's, that's pretty funny, right? Just because you don't even interact with black people in your community. So it's just funny how you want to do a resolution now. You know, that's, 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 that's really some clown stuff on your part. That's all I have to say.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Randall Taylor.
Good morning, Mr. Taylor.
I don't see him on. Next speaker is Robin Casper Oski.
She's on.
Hello, yes.
Hi, good morning. Please state your name and neighborhood, please.
Yes, it's Ms. Robin Casper Oski. And I live in the Mount Oliver, I guess, the city 15210, city district 16, cross, I think that's a 16th district, I believe. Anyway, so, and I'm just learning the whole process. So I am fit to be tied and I'll have you know why right now. I'm holding back tears because what's going on here, okay, is they opened up, you opened up a school in my neighborhood that I've been here, living here for 50 years. Okay, we've never had any trouble down here. Now, you have closed every city's school around you. Okay, this is the last school that you have operational left in the city. Okay, you've had problems with every single one of them. Yet you come down here in my neighborhood and open up things and start trouble for me. Okay, you have nowhere left to go to open up a decent school. You wanted to know, and then, and then, with no consideration of the neighborhood, you chose to put in a commercial grade generator that runs and doesn't shut off. When I call the police and they can't shut it off, and it runs from 8:00 in the morning on a Sunday until 8:00 in the morning the next Monday, I had a test. I had to withdraw. It's COVID-19, I couldn't go to a library. Nobody could jump down here and shut a commercial grade generator off in the middle of the, on a Sunday. And you have nowhere left to put a city's school. And your council secretary asked me, what is my ask for? I am upset, okay? You'd think you'd take a little bit of consideration for the neighborhood as you come into the last neighborhood with decency and mess it up. There's four grade generators sitting on the top to make sure that these kids have air conditioning to go to school in. Okay, you asked me for another penny. Okay, I want to know if that budget meeting comes up for the city's schools, okay? Because I'm not paying another dime of taxes when it comes to putting an air conditioning unit for small bus-sized generators across the street from me and run them all through the summer. There's not been a person in school. And yet those generators have been running all through the holiday, every day. You asked me for a penny. I wanted those things silenced so that I can exist here in this neighborhood. There's nobody there. There's nobody in school and these commercial generators are running. You guys have no consideration. I asked the zoning board, I talked to the zoning board. They could have closed these things off or they could have moved them in the back. They didn't do any of that. They came down here and just put these things in. I don't think there were permits. They don't have permits. Every time I hear that there's no permit, they tell me that they're, they're, they're zone permitted. So I need to find out a fix for this because I can't live like this. And this is the last decent neighborhood that you guys have here. I would like for the generators, they have Beverly Services, they have those things that goes over top of the generators. Actually, they should be on all summer, okay? And I don't want to pay taxes for a, for, for air conditioning for a school that nobody's in, okay? Plus, the generator that can't shut off even when I call my police. And then I call 311. And another thing is, 311, the mayor has no idea what the other hand does. So if I call the mayor or my councilman, they have no idea what the city's school does. I don't know how to fix this. I'd really like to know. Please, somebody.
Madam President?
Please.
Could you ask the caller to just discreetly leave her phone number with the, with the Clerk's office?
Yes, we have it, Councilman, but I also want to.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. I also want to add that for the public's knowledge is that the school board is ran by a separate governmental body and that we don't have, necessarily have a vote on what schools are open or closed. And so, but you can connect them also to their board members if they have a concern about the school properties.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to go back to the Gary Kilmeyer, Gary, that was on?
Gary Kilmy, Kilmeyer.
Kilmeyer, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we're here.
Okay.
Okay, Gary Kelmeyer, speaking here.
Can't get the video on again.
I am the attorney.
The host has stopped it.
Okay, one, one person at a time speak, please. Mr. Kilmeyer, go, please go ahead and state your name and neighborhood.
Yes, I am Gary Kelmeyer, representing. Yes, I am Gary Kilmeier, representing Eric and Beth Rupert from the Lawrenceville neighborhood. I have spoken before repeatedly and given my message and I won't give details except to say that, uh, we are against the historic designation of 186 Holm Street in Lawrenceville as an historic structure because first of all, the owner involved was a, was an aggressive slave owner. And, uh, the other reason I had given before repeatedly with backup materials and references was that the structure, as you've heard many times, is simply not worthy of designation. And I point out that, uh, the proponent of the designation has his structure on Maury Street, I called Maury House, I'm sorry, has been designated. So, so there is a preservation of a representative of this type of structure already in place. I don't understand why these people should be harassed to have theirs designated when they have objected to it. I mean, the owners. All that as it may, what I do want to stress today is two elements, I'll call them. First is the legal element. You know, I am a lawyer and I regret to say this, but I do have to point out that the entire procedural history of this designation has been done without due process, without a fair opportunity to be heard, uh, by the property owners or myself as their representative. Uh, wrong addresses have been used for notices. They've sent notices to the property which has been vacant for many years when it was getting noticed. And it's just, it's, and the, the ordinance itself, with all due respect, is, is, is very confusingly and poorly written. It really needs to be reviewed. And the procedure that's been followed or attempted to be followed is just totally unacceptable. Uh, it, it cannot, it cannot withstand, uh, any type of court scrutiny. So I hate to be a lawyer about it, but I have to point that out. I, I think it's only sensible to think about that. But the other thing I wanted to stress with the time remaining for me is the human element. You know, the folks are coming up with proposals. One man talked about how whimsically happy he would be to walk down the street and see this structure. And other people want the structure designated, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a piece of property. It's a building. But the human element of what this is doing and has done to this Rupert family, it's like it's been dismissed, is not important. And I hope, I pray and plead with you to keep that in mind more than all the other factors that I have talked about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers, Madam President?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Having exhausted our list of registered speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business. And that is the, uh, presentation of papers. Uh, Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Madam President.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 519, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Enter Into a License Agreement with McCoymet, Barrow, Salazar Incorporated to Allow the Performance of Site Preparation Work on Designated City Property in Order to Facilitate the Construction of Larimer East Liberty Phases III and IV Choice Neighborhood Development. Bill Number 521, Resolution Repealing, Amending and Reenacting Resolution Number 18 of 1983, Which Authorizes and Directs that the Bureau of Cable Communications, Department of Public Works, Broadcast All of Council's Regular Legislative Sessions, Standing Committee Meetings, Setting forth the Responsibilities of the Department of Innovation and Performance With Respect to Meetings of City Council and to Reflect Various Changes In the City's Department Organization's Structure and Other Changes To Reflect Technological, Technological Innovations Since 1983.
Madam President, I'd like to waive Rule 8 on the request of the administration for Bill 0519.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. It'll be on tomorrow's, uh, Wednesday Standing Committee Meeting Agenda with Councilman Lavelle. Um, Councilman, Chair of Public Works. Councilman Coghill.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 500, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance On Behalf of the City to Enter Into a Temporary Construction Easement In Lieu of Imminent Domain With the Owners of Certain Properties In the 24th Ward of the City Adjacent to Cowley Park For Landslide Remediation Work Related to Public Park Purposes. Bill Number 501, Resolution Authorizing the Department of, the Director of the Department of Finance On Behalf of the City to Enter Into Temporary Construction Easement In Lieu of Imminent Domain With the Owners of Certain Property In the 19th Ward of the City Known As 1599 Fallowfield Avenue And 1545 Fallowfield Avenue For Landslide Remediation Work Related to Public Roadway Purposes. Bill Number 502, Resolution Granting Until Mark Dina Tow Their Successors And Assigns the Privilege and License To Construct, Maintain And Use At Their Own Costs and Expense To Install A New Retaining Wall And Fence At Sycamore Street And Red Way In the 19th Ward Second Council District.
Thank you. Now, Councilman, Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Uh, Councilman Kraus for Councilwoman Gross.
Uh, no new papers, uh, Madam President, forgive me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Excuse me, no new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you again, Councilman Kraus. Uh, Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 504, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal By the Council Of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council On March 17, 2020 To Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration For 49 Additional Days, Thereby Making the Declaration Effective Until August 25, In Response To the Ongoing Public Health Emergency Associated With the Spread of the Coronavirus. Bill Number 506, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement With DJ Kapoor, The Kapoor Company And Braddock Way For Professional Services In Connection With FOP Interest Arbitration In An Amount Not To Exceed $35,000. Bill Number 507, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement With Howard J. Woods Jr. And Associates For Professional Services In Connection With PUC Litigation And Related Matters In An Amount Not To Exceed $50,000. Bill Number 508, Resolution Amending Resolution 829, Which Authorizes the Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement With Campbell Durant, PC, For Professional Legal Services And Expert Advice Regarding Labor Matters By Increase In The Total Cost $35,000 From $305,000 To $340,000. Bill Number 509, Resolution Authorizing The Issuing Of A Warrant In Favor Of Kurtner And Hefner In An Amount Not To Exceed $11,864.05 For Professional Legal Services And Expert Advice Regarding Sluts Of ACOM Litigation. Bill Number 510, Resolution Amending Resolution 587, Authorizing the Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement With Fox Rothschild LLP For Professional Consultant And Legal Services In Relation To False Claim Act Litigation By Increase In The Total Cost $45,000 From $235,000 To $280,000. Bill Number 511, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The City Solicitor On Behalf of the City To Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement With Coheen Law Group To Address A Matter Of Pending Telecommunications And Cable Regulatory Litigation In An Amount Not To Exceed $29,000. Bill Number 512, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With John Passadolis For Professional Legal Services For An Employment Related Matter Before The Human Relations Commission For An Amount Not To Exceed $24,000. Bill Number 513, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With Cosen O'Connor For Professional Legal Services In Connection With An Employment Related Matter For An Amount Not To Exceed $15,000.
Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman.
Uh, motion to waive the rules of council so Bill 504 can be, can appear under final action today.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 514, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The Department of Public Safety On Behalf of the City To Enter Into An Access Agreement With Carnegie Science Center of Pittsburgh For Purposes Of A Drive-In Movie Presentation.
I believe that, Madam Clark, correct me, there's a motion to waive the rules?
Yes.
514?
Yes.
Yes, uh, motion to waive the rules.
So the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Bill will appear on, of those opposed here.
One second, I think, I think, uh, um, Councilman Kraus, you had a question and said that, uh, we got an email from the administration saying that 514 that they did not want to waive the rule on that, that they had time.
Um, may I, Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's, uh, it, that, I need you to refresh my memory, Count, or Madam Clark. I know he sent it over in a written communication. Uh, is it both, uh, is it 514 as well?
There were two hundred and fifty bells, right?
It was Bill 512. Right, 512 and 514, he said did not need a waiver of the rule.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, Councilman. Thank you. Councilman O'Connor, um, so can we, do we have to withdraw that motion?
I mean, I can always hold the bill tomorrow. It doesn't matter. I can just hold the bill a week tomorrow if we already passed it to waive the rules.
No, no, we're good. We're good because we didn't vote yet.
Okay.
Thank you. So Councilwoman, thank you, Councilman. Sorry for the confusion. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 505, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into An Agreement With SciCom Data Systems Inc. For Professional Services Relating To Continuing Maintenance, Support And Upgrades To City Law, The Department of Law's Legal Case Management And Administrative Support Software System At A Cost Not To Exceed $11,376. Bill Number 515, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance To Enter Into A Three-Year Contract With S3, Renting Uncapped Citywide Access To S3's Product For All Departments To Build And Maintain A City's Authorizedated System Of Record, Make Data-Driven Decisions, Share Information Across Departments, Perform Advanced Analytical And Share Information With The Public To Meet The Needs Of The City At a Sum Not To Exceed $600,000. Bill Number 516, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance To Enter Into A Startup Participation Agreement With Selected Entities As Part Of The Six Copart Of Pittsburgh Lab And Further Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance To Enter Into Program Participation Agreements With Local Municipal Entities To Allow Such Entities To Test Products And Services As Part Through The PGH Lab.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use And Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. And my seat, Chair of Hearings, I have no papers to be presented. Is there any unfinished, we'll now move on to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business for council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I just wanted to state, in my agenda, I had Bill 503, but it was not read today. And I was going to hold it for a week. Um, I'm wondering, am I missing something?
503, is that the one I asked you to hold?
Yes.
Yes, so I talked to the clerk just before the meeting and we decided just not to read it until we have the chance. I apologize, should have made sure.
No problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for paying attention. The next order of business is reports of committee for final action. We have Councilman Lavelle for Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning. Again, thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 495, Report of the Committee on Finance And Law For July 1, 2020, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 440, In Ordinance Supplementing The Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article IX Boards And Commissions And Authorities By Adding Chapter 179G To Establish The LGBTQIA+ Commission In Order To Advocate For Equity For The LGBTQIA+ Community In Pittsburgh. Bill Number 448, Resolution Declaring That Black Pittsburgh Matters In The City Of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? None?
Well, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, bills are not ready for final passage. Oh, in favor of the passage, whoever the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President. Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Councilman O'Connor, Committee On Public Safety.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 496, Report of the Committee On Public Safety Services For July 1, 2020, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 441, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Public Safety To Execute Relevant Agreements To Receive Grand Funding From The U.S. Department Of Justice For Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding And Further Providing For An Agreement And Expenditures Not To Exceed $676,895.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final passage. Those in favor of, whoever the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee On Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 497, Report of the Committee On Public Works For July 1, 2020, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 436, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Public Works To Enter Into A Temporary Right-of-Entry And License Agreement Between The City And The Four Homeowners For The Purpose Of Repairing The Slope Through Coal Stabilization At The Rear Of The Homeowner's Property Adjacent And In Freight Park. Bill Number 485, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Finance To Grant A Temporary Construction Easement To 2013 PA Preston LLC To Perform Land Stabilization Work.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none? Bills are not ready for final passage. Oh, in favor of, whoever the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee On Innovation, Performance And Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 499, Report of the Committee On Innovation, Performance And Assets Management For July 1, 2020, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 442, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 389 of 2019, Which Authorizes The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Permits, Licenses And Inspection To Enter Into An Agreement To, uh, With, To Purchase A Cellar Civic Platform And A Cellar Citizen Access Subscription In Cloud Hosting Services So As To Extend The Contract An Additional Year Into June 30, 2021. And Increase The Not-To-Exceed Cost From One Million Two Hundred Sixty-nine Thousand Nine Hundred Sixty-two Dollars And Sixteen Cent To One Million Two Hundred Eighty-nine Thousand Nine Hundred And Nineteen Dollars And Twenty-nine Cent. Bill Number 494, Resolution Amending And Supplementing Resolution 539, Which Authorizes The Mayor, City Clerk And Or Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance To Enter Into A Contract With Granicus, Inc. For Software Upgrades, Server Hosting Services And Annual Maintenance Of Legisstar Agenda Management And Video Streaming In Order To Extend The Contract An Additional Twelve Months For A Total Cost Of Two Hundred Forty-seven Thousand Seven Hundred And Twenty-two Dollars And Twenty-two Cent.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final passage. All in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally-- Move on to Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee On Innovation, Performance And Asset Management.
We skipped land use with Councilman Wilson's--
Did I skip that one? Okay, I apologize. Councilman-- I knew there was-- Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee On Land Use And Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson Presents Bill Number 498, Report Of The Committee On Land Use And Economic Development For July First, 2020 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 237, Resolution Providing For The Designation As A Historic Structure Under Title XI Of The Code Of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known As The Maori Addison House Located At 5134 Carnegie Street In The Lawrenceville Neighborhood, Sixth Ward.
Thank you. Now-- You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the-- I just like some clarity. Did anybody hear from Councilwoman Gross? And if we held this one more week to wait for her, would we still be within the right timeframe So That This Was Not Automatically Approved? We want to make sure we take a place of a--
Madam President, I believe she's in favor of this, as is the homeowner. This is the Maori House.
Yeah.
You know--
She's in favor of what? Of historic designation?
Yes.
Two different ones.
Okay.
Two different bills.
But if we hold these both-- What-- Councilman Wilson, what-- Did you talk at all with Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, she's in favor of this bill. The-- I mean, to answer your question, will we be within the timeframe? I believe, you know, we do have another-- Another week. The fifteenth would be the last day, if I'm not certain, but I don't--
There's two of them. This is the one she's in favor of. There's one that-- She's in favor of, but the homeowner's not, correct?
Yeah, this one is not the Ewatt House. This is the Maori House. This is not-- This is not the one that we've been hearing public comment on--
Okay.
For the past few years.
Okay. So, do you want to-- We'll just take the vote then?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the passage, whether the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And now we'll move on to motions and resolutions. We have several meeting announcements.
Madam President, may I, before you do your meeting announcements, I just got a call from Chief of Staff Gilman. There was just a miscommunication. We do wish to waive the rules for Bill 514 For The Carnegie Science Center To Begin Showing Movies. And so could we please go back to the Councilman O'Connor And offer up a waiver-- Or I'm sorry, a waiver to waive the rules on-- Rule Eight For Bill 514?
Yes. Motion to waive the rules on Bill 514, so it appears tomorrow.
And I'm gonna say it would be helpful if the administration would call the chairperson of that committee.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was--
For the confusion.
Yeah, I-- No, I knew there was a waiver, so I don't-- I don't know where the miscommunication was, but it's fine.
No, I'll take responsibility. I apologize.
Oh, no. No worries.
Thank you. We have a motion to waive the rules of council. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, but-- Okay, now we have the meeting announcements. A cable cast public hearing is scheduled for tomorrow.
One moment. We have that emergency declaration that we need to dispose of.
Do we have that, Councilman? Okay, let me finish making these announcements. We'll come back.
Sorry.
A cable cast public hearing is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, July eighth, at 5:00 p.m. On Bill 447 As It Relates To Adding To The 2020 November General Election Ballot A Referendum Question To Expand The Powers Of The Independent Citizens Police Review Board. Also, council has scheduled a public-- A public cable cast post-agenda And A Public Hearing On Bills 404, 405, 406, And 410 As They Relate To Stop The Violence Fund And Policing. The post will-- Will be next Tuesday, July fourteenth, at 2:00 p.m. And The Hearing Will Be Next Wednesday On July fifteenth, at 5:00 p.m. To Register To Speak At Tomorrow's Hearing, Please Call The Clerk's Office At 412-255-2138 By 3:30 p.m. On Both July eighth And July fifteenth. You May Also Submit Comments By-- By Email Via The City Clerk's Office At PittsburghPA.GO. Council Has Also Scheduled Cable Cast Post-Agenda And Public Hearings On Police Reform And Budgeting For The Following Dates. Post-Agenda Is On Thursday, July sixteenth And Monday, July twenty-seventh, Both At 10:00 a.m. Public Hearings Will Be On Saturday, July eighteenth At Noon And Tuesday, July twenty-first And Wednesday, July twenty-second, Both At 6:00 p.m. To Register To Speak At These Hearings, Please Call The City Clerk's Office At 412-255-2138 By 5:00 p.m. On July seventeenth And At 3:30 p.m. On July twenty-first And July twenty-second. You May Also Submit Your Comments By Email Via The City Clerk's Office At PittsburghPA.GO. Now, I just want to say briefly That We're Having These Meetings Because There's A Lot Of Legislation Coming To The Table, A Lot Of Items That People Want To See Passed. I Think That We Need To Hear From The Public And From The Public Safety-- Public Safety Department So That We're Hearing All Possibilities Of Whatever We're Going To Do And The Impact Of What They'll Have. So, we want to make sure people are coming out to these to speak. So, we made sure we scheduled three public hearings, so-- And one on a Saturday And Two In The Evenings So That People Have An Opportunity To Participate. And We Have Two Post-Agendas And One Will Be That We'll Hear From The Beginning. Everybody Has Something To Say. The Public Can Comment On It. And Then We'll Come Back Again And Work With Councilman Burgess And Councilman Lavelle And Others On Their Legislation. And I think with Councilman Kraus has something as well. So, we'll work on everyone's legislation together And Try To Come Up With Something That's Agreeable To All. It's gonna be difficult, but I think we can do it. So, with that said, now we'll move on to-- Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the reminder. Councilman Lavelle, you have--
One more reminder. Before you move from there, you have interviews scheduled in the morning at 9:30 For planning And the EORC.
Thank you. So, we have interviews tomorrow at 9:30 a.m.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavelle, we have to talk. I can barely get her at my own house. Anyway. We'll have hearings-- Interviews Tomorrow For-- Do we know What They're For For The Various Boards That We-- From Last Week, Correct?
The Director Of Planning.
And The Director Of Planning.
Yes, And EORC.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, those are tomorrow at 9:30 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. And now, Councilman Lavelle.
Would the clerk please read Bill 504?
Bill 504, Resolution Providing For Further Renewal By The Council Of The City Of A Declaration Of Disaster Emergency Ratified By Council On March Seventeenth, 2020 To Extend The Effectiveness Of The Declaration For Forty-Nine Additional Days Thereby Making The Declaration Effective Until August twenty-fifth In Response To The Ongoing Public Health Emergency Associated With The Spread Of The Coronavirus.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Any discussion? Councilman Lavelle, this is longer Because We Have A Break In Between From Council, Correct? Okay. And so-- Okay. No further discussion. All in favor?
We'll need a roll call vote.
All vote.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And I-- I just want to add, anybody else have anything for motions and resolutions? No? So, I just want to add, you know, I-- I listen to the callers come in Or The Public Comment Come In. People come in, and I just want to say, it's really difficult To Sit Here And Listen To Anyone Say Anything Negative About Our Colleagues Because I Know How Hard People Work And How Much They Care. And, you know, we may disagree On A Lot Of Things, But The One Thing I Do Know Is That I Have A Lot Of Amazing Colleagues That Really Care A Lot About The City And About Their Constituency. I Just Would Hope That We Would Become A, you know-- A Kinder City Starting With Our Public Comment. And I Just Want To Remind People That Our Members Are Human And We All-- You Know, Make The Fact We All Care At The Same Time. So, I just want to say that part. If we have a motion to excuse the absent member And Motion To Approve The Minutes And Adjourn The Meeting.
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe. Stay healthy.